Mayor Weiss?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Here.
Councilmember Keim?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as well. Mr. Mullen?
Thank you. The city council met in closed session to discuss several items. Item one was conference with labor negotiator involving the status of negotiations with the OFA, OFMA, MECO, and the Western Council of Engineers, and there's no action to report on item one. On item two, conference with legal counsel on two workers' compensation matters, Charles Smith versus City of Oceanside, Donna Bonosik versus City of Oceanside. Counsel did give direction on both, but there's no action to report at this time. With respect to item 2B, initiation of litigation in the matter of one case. The council again did give direction, but there's no reportable action under the Brown Act on item 2B. Finally, there was no closed session on item three that was removed from the agenda.
Thank you. Well, that will go to our consent calendar, which are items six through seventeen, and I'd like to pull item twelve, please, and do we have any public, Mr. Navarro?
We have public on item number six and item number eight.
Councilmember Sanchez?
That was number six, and which one?
Number eight.
Move approval for balance.
We have a motion and second for the balance, please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Number six, Mr. Navarro, what do we have there, sir?
The city clerk's office received three comments for item number six, and of those three comments, only two wanted their comments to be read. Consent calendar, item number six is the ratification of amendment one and the amount of $75,394 to the professional services agreement with Oceanside Kitchen Collaborative for a revised contract amount not to exceed $539,958, approval of amendment two and the amount of $67,980 for a revised contract amount not to exceed $616,938 for the COVID-19 Emergency Response Food Program, and approval of a budget appropriation in the amount of $152,374 from the general fund, infrastructure assigned fund, balance to the fund the amendments, and authorize for the city manager to execute the amendment. Our first public comment tonight is from Cindy Davenport. "I am Cindy Davenport at 541 Crouch Street since 2008. I am one of the many enthusiastic volunteers helping prepare meals at the COVID-19 Emergency Response Food Program operated by Oceanside Kitchen Collaborative, OKC. I am so impressed by the kitchen, what a great investment by the city of Oceanside to strive for zero waste by avoiding food waste and by OKC. The staff are so knowledgeable, friendly, and driven to do the right thing. I am also so proud to be a small part of the big idea to support local farms and incorporate fresh produce into healthy meals for those who need it. I often visualize the great seal of the city of Oceanside with the lower-left quadrant representing farming in Oceanside since 1888. I want farming to be a great part of Oceanside now and our future. As I understand it, item six will revise their contract and give them more money. Thank you. I urge you to continue this great program and fund it as long as possible. The citizens and volunteers, thank you." Our next public comment is from Bill Bachelor. "Bill Bachelor, 1916 Moreno Street, Oceanside. The initial professional services agreement dated March 25th is not attached to staff reports. This is inconsistent with standard procedures and results in council's review lacking full transparency. I'd like to bring the attention of council to the line items on attachment A and attachment B. The money being allocated for COVID-19 includes a 40-hour-per-week human resources director with a run rate equal to an annual loaded cost of $78,000. A full-time HR director for a staff of 11 is highly unusual and difficult to justify. Has anyone looked at these line items and asked OKC to confirm the existence of and the necessity of these expenses? I understand that OKC, by its own accounting, has been able to provide meals at a very reasonable rate. However, if meals were provided at $8 per meal, for example, the allocation of $25,000 over the duration of this agreement toward an unnecessary, even if it exists, HR director could have provided an additional $3,125 meals." Bill Bachelor, candidate, Oceanside City Council, District Three. That concludes the public comment on item number six.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I also volunteered at the Oceanside Kitchen Collaborative, and it's a phenomenal program. I don't remember how many were volunteering the day, but there were several people, and it's been a really, really great program. They stood up at a time when we needed it. They were able to get capacity, 10,000 meals a day, and that's certainly amazing. So, very, very supportive of this. I'd actually like to see, as our food programs, contracts expire, I'd love to see them front and center in Oceanside. That kitchen was built for recycling, and it's fantastic. This program was great, and going forward, I think that it's a special place. We need to continue. Thank you. Move approval.
Deputy Mayor Feller? We have a motion and second, please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Item eight?
Item number eight is the approval of a marketing agreement with Utility Service Partners Private Label Incorporated, a Delaware corporation, for a three-year term and a one-year renewal at no cost to the city to provide an insurance program that homeowners may purchase to pay costs related to repair or replace utility service lines or laterals, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. The city clerk's office received one voicemail after the deadline, as well as one email. One email wanted to be read into the record from Cindy Rocco. And the public comment from Cindy Rocco is the following. "1980s city relinquishes responsibility, accountability, and bequeaths to landowners. So why now then? What are projections, miles cost for laterals, rate of failure, timeline? This is critical since the financial burdens are on landowners since the 80s. The city could reown and budget the essential service. In my humble opinion, measure X, dollars, could buy city warranty, due repairs, replacement, et cetera, while gaining economies of scale. Would you not agree that this directly improves the equality of life of the entire community? Financial conflict of interest between the city and landowners as related to revenue royalties via the exclusive insurance marketing relationship with this company owned by Home Warranty. We should not be engaged in the business of marketing an insurance product. Insurance is inherently tricky with long history of fraud. A core risk is appearance of endorsement via the city logo being used, which would establish more trust in Home Warranty. This company was selected based on customer service, yet the BBB has multiple customer complaints. Is it worth the risk to owners if this warranty insurance company fails to meet the needs of the owner because the details and meanwhile, the city made some money off their premiums? Respectfully, Cindy Rocco." And that concludes the public comment for item number eight.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Is staff here on this? Yes. Thank you. You know, I kind of had the same kind of questions in my head about, well, this is the first time I see the city saying, you know what, this is not going to be a cost to us, but we're going to present this to the community, to ratepayers, as an option to buy insurance. Definitely, whenever your sewer line, water line breaks, it's a major, major issue. So, why is the city, why did the city decide to go ahead and say, okay, this is an option?
Honorable Mayor and city council members, Cary Dale, Water Utilities Director. We were approached by the League of Cities as this program being something that would be valuable to the residents. We had taken action within the last five to 10 years to ensure that the homeowners had responsibility for the repair of the laterals that could fail, the repair costs of which can run upwards of $10,000. So, this is actually a service that is provided for residents, and we've been considering it for a while, just have not had the staff time to bring it forward.
Are there many companies in the business of insuring water lines?
I would imagine that anyone's homeowner insurance policy would be able to add that on as an additional premium, but I don't think it's a standard on policies.
There's no other, it's unique in that it's a standalone kind of insurance?
This is unique, yes.
And the staff report indicates that if someone was to go ahead and want to start being covered, it would be billed separately, it wouldn't be on your water bill, it'd be billed separately. Is that correct?
It's billed outside of any of the city billing services, yes.
But we do have a caveat that we're not guaranteeing anything?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's just a proviso to the community that this is something that is going to be made available to our residents, our ratepayers, and they apparently have, I mean, there's someone, one of the people who commented said that they have some complaints, but overall, they seem to be a good insurance company?
In this instance, the analyst that worked on this particular staff report did, I feel in my opinion, a very extensive vetting with the cities that had existing contracts with this company, and provided, they were provided with reassurances that they were very happy with their services being provided to the citizens.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is unusual, but it is a big cost. I mean, it can be upwards of $10,000. There are some aging hookups. Citizens are, or ratepayers are responsible for up to the middle of the road, right? The hookups at the middle of the road. So, I'm going to go ahead and move approval. Again, this is unusual, but perhaps, you know, it's time for us to start getting that information out. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. This cannot come back on us in any way. We're not putting our logo on their insurance papers, or, as was mentioned.
You, under the contract, have the ability to have a non-exclusive license to use the city's name or logo, other branding, on letters, bills, or marketing materials sent to the property owners from time to time and used in advertising, all at the company's sole cost and expense, subject to the city's prayer review and approval. So, it's not the city providing the service, they're just allowing them to, a non-exclusive right in the marketing materials to use the city's name. They have this contract with us.
The only thing I'm concerned about is them coming back on us, the residents having us as a fallback if they, if this...
No, sir, we're not the insurer.
I second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
We'll go to item twelve. Is there anyone other than me that had a?
No public on item number twelve, but councilmember Sanchez did raise her hand.
Oh, okay. Yeah, item twelve is approval of fifteen, fifteen three-year professional services agreements with consulting firms each in an amount not to exceed $150,000 per year, a total of $450,000 over the three-year period for as-needed capital improvement program and land development services to augment engineering division staff through June 2023, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreements. And, you know, the fifteen really jumped at me, because if we're that busy, we ought to be hiring someone or some people to do the job. I understand that right now, we use generally one or two people, and this will expand the pool in case they, you know, don't have the time, but that kind of begs back the question, and that's my concern, is that perhaps we ought to be looking at, you know, at this point, because we're going through COVID, and yet, the department is busy. So, when COVID is lifted, when all of this is done, we're still going to be busy. So, it seems like we ought to be looking at the potential for hiring more. I feel that when you have a city employee, they're more consistent, they need to deal with customer, on a customer service in terms of the residents coming in and also from the city, so there would be oversight through the city, and also, I mean, it's that consistency, it's having that job and wanting to do a really good job and working with other city employees. So, those are my concerns. I don't know if you wanted to add something to that, because I have two staff members at the podium, obviously wanting to say something.
Well, and I ask for this to be removed as well, and my concern being, I can understand the need for specialty services and what you're doing. The question I have is, are any of these consultants going to be used to perform what would be normal and customary duties of what would be a city employee?
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, just to provide a little bit of background, if you don't mind, to indulge me for a minute, and then certainly I'll answer your question directly, Mayor. So, just as a point of clarification, the fifteen agreements cover seven different services that we've historically contracted out for, with the exception of one service, and this kind of gets to your question, Mayor, and that is for land development review. And the reason that we are adding land development review to this contract, and something that we haven't contracted out before, is right now, we are down a position in that area, and we certainly have a lot of volume in terms of projects to review, so it is helpful to have that. And in addition to that, making sure that we have a nice selection of consultants also helps us keep up with all of our streamlining efforts to make sure that we're able to turn around all our plan reviews on time as well. So, in terms of the services that are provided, essentially, we're dealing with nine different firms providing seven different services. The fifteen agreements is because some of the firms applied to provide services for multiple service categories, that's how we get to the fifteen. The way that the agreements are structured is it's $150,000 per firm, per service provided for up to three years, so it's $150,000 per year, up to three years. However, that dollar amount does not run over from year to year, so I would say, based on historical uses of consultants, we're not going to get anywhere near that maximum amount for any of those consultants over that period of time, and if we only use, for example, $50,000 for services for one consultant in one year, they're starting at $150,000 the next year, they don't roll over that leftover balance as well. One of the reasons that we did want to do things a little bit differently this year and go out for providing multiple vendors for the same service is because, I can say within the last couple of years, we've ran into issues where we only have one consultant providing a certain service, and we haven't been happy with their service, or there's been a change in their ability to provide service, and we don't have backups. So, this time around, we wanted at least two consultants per service provided, just so that we have options, not that we're going to use that contract amount. Again, if you look at our historic use, and I don't really expect that to change, I don't think we're going to be anywhere near the maximum amount for any of these contracts, quite frankly. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Brian?
Yes, thank you. Honorable Mayor, city council members, Brian Thomas, city engineer. To expand upon what the deputy city manager had mentioned, the contract's $150,000 a year with no rollover. Our prior contracts have run right up around $150,000 a year. To give that some context, that's roughly the equivalent of one full-time employee at the associate engineer level. However, break that down even further, if we're using a consultant rate of $200 an hour, we're getting about 750 hours a year out of the consultant. So, to address the mayor's question directly, a lot of these are specialty, geotech, surveying, stormwater quality review. Some of the others are just merely because we need the additional bodies to move capital projects forward. In the past, we've used Harris Associates for both project management and construction management, so, but by moving forward with some of these contracts, we'd be able to augment staff in an immediate need. One of the issues that we have right now is trying to find qualified people to fill the positions, and we have the immediate needs right now. As an example, in land development, we have five full-time employees, and we have about 120 projects currently either in entitlement or under active review, and in capital projects, we have four full-time employees with 68 ongoing and new projects just this year. So, the need is real. We're hoping to prevent burnout of staff at this point by augmenting the immediate need. In the past, we've reached out to the engineering field as a whole to provide full-time employees, and sometimes, the candidate pool is just not what we need. They're just not there. They either don't have the experience, they have the wrong experience, or they're just not the right fit for the department.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, gentlemen. My opinion is, I think you guys should ask for more. I think you're doing an outstanding job as a department in mitigating your cost and working with developers. Every project, every developer I have spoken to is above and beyond impressed with response times, staff involvement, and the words getting out. And so, if we continue on this pathway, and we're going from start to entitlement in, you know, nine months or less, that makes for an exceptionally business-friendly environment, and that's what we need here in Oceanside. So, I encourage you, if you guys need more, if you need more assistance in the future, more consulting, bring it. But I fully support this, and I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Yeah, I had a question based on what you said. So, what was the last time that you tried to go out and fill a position? Go ahead.
I'm going to give one recent example. It actually results, this is actually an example from traffic engineer, but it actually, I think, translates perfectly into what we're dealing with, because to Brian's point, it's been a real struggle to hire qualified engineers. We recently went out to replace a traffic engineering position, and we're trying to recruit an associate traffic engineer and had absolutely no luck in getting qualified candidates for a very important position, so...
Is that because of salaries?
It's actually, it's a very tight market right now for engineers, quite honestly, and I think, I know that council is aware of some of quality engineers that we've lost to water districts and other agencies as well, so it's just a real competitive market. But in regards to the traffic engineer, we had to actually downgrade that position to an assistant, because we weren't effective in acquiring or bringing on an associate, so it's a challenge. And then, of course, and I know this goes without saying, but one of the benefits of using the approach that we're taking, and because of the economic uncertainty, allows us to dial back and not be in a position of bringing staff on that we then have to let go in a year or two, which we certainly would want to avoid, and it's happened in the past.
Well, we have the business, that's not going away.
For the foreseeable future, yes, we do.
So, you're saying that the fifteen, or the seven departments, seven different services, you've tried going out to find employees in all seven?
I can't speak to that, I'll defer to Brian on that one, but I do know the answer to that question directly is no, because...
Traffic engineer was included in this?
No, it's not. I was just using that as an example, as a challenge we've had in hiring engineers. Some of these tasks are so specialized that, in our opinion, it wouldn't make sense to bring on a full-time position, because the work just isn't there to support that specialized task.
How many of these fifteen, or these situations, are so specialized that you would, consulting would be ideal, whereas, how many of these, would you say, yeah, it's time to get a full-time employee?
I'll defer to Brian on that particular question, I'm looking at the categories.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez, there are three specific categories, that would be the stormwater and stormwater quality, that would be geotechnical engineering, and that would be surveying. Currently, the city does not have a classification for a survey position within the city, and although we do have a licensed surveyor on staff, he's currently working out a classification. And without the extended survey plan check contracts, more and more work is going to be forced to this individual to do in-house, because I don't have a license to cover those things, and it would be incumbent upon this individual to continue to work out a class at that point.
You can't just get him into class?
We're working on that.
Okay.
Motion, I'll second that motion, and seeing no other lights, please vote.
Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no.
We'll go to item number 18, which is adoption of three resolutions regarding the municipal election pertaining to the North River Farms Project, and Mr. Navarro, you're up.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, item number 18 is presenting the referendum petition protesting ordinance number 19-OR0729-1, also known as the North River Farms Project, to be placed on the ballot. Tonight, staff is recommending that the city council adopt three resolutions related to the general municipal election to be held on November 3, 2020. The first resolution is to call the general municipal election for the purpose of placing the North River Farms ordinance on the November ballot. The second resolution is to request that the board of supervisors consolidate the general municipal election with the statewide election per elections code. And the third resolution is to set priorities for filing written arguments, filing the rebuttals, and to direct the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. Background on this item, on November 6, 2019, the city council introduced the ordinance of the North River Farms Project, and on November 20, the council adopted the ordinance On December 20, 2019, the proponents of the referendum filed referendum petitions with the city clerk's office, and on December 23 of last year, we requested that the register of voters conduct a verification of 3% of the signatures. The sampling of the signatures tested showed that the number of valid signatures fell between 95% to 110% of the required number of signatures to place this referendum on the ballot. Due to California Elections Code 9115, this margin necessitated a full signature count, which we requested on January 28, 2020. March 19, 2020, the ROV confirmed the valid number, amount of signatures on the petitions. On March 25, the council certified the referendum petition and recommended submitting it to the voters at the regular municipal election on November 3, 2020. So, there are three actions that are required to place this on the ballot. The first is to call the election for the purpose of placing this on the ballot. The second is to adopt a resolution requesting that the board of supervisors consolidate this with the statewide general municipal election, and the third resolution is to adopt certain regulations written to written arguments, rebuttal arguments, and to direct the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. Since the publication of the staff report, the city clerk's office received a cost update from the register of voters. COVID-19 has impacted the ROV's cost projections on all measures and the general election. The new cost estimate for this measure is between $115,000 to $160,000. Tonight, staff is recommending that the city council adopt the three resolutions to call the general municipal election for the purpose of placing this item on the ballot. to call the general municipal election for the purpose of placing this item on the ballot, to request that the Board of Supervisors consolidate the general municipal election with the statewide general election per Elections Code, and for setting priorities for filing written arguments, rebuttals, and to direct the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. That concludes my presentation, and I am available if you have any questions, and we Under item number 18, the city clerk's office only received two comments for this item. And our first comment is from Arlene Hammerschmidt. Dear City Clerk Zeb Navarro and City Attorney John Mullen, thank you for producing the straightforward, people-friendly language describing the ballot measure that will bring our citizens' referendum protesting the ordinance for the North River Farms Project to our voters November 3, 2020. This makes twice in recent memory that you have delivered a very direct, clear, and unbiased statement explaining what our no or yes vote will mean, the first being Measure K and whether city clerk and city treasurer should be elected or appointed by reporting, by and reporting to the city manager. The proposed ballot measure language is an excellent example of how city government builds trust with voters. Please continue on this path toward increasing transparency and building genuine trust with all Oceanside residents. City council members, please approve the ballot measure language verbatim during Agenda Item Number 18 of the June 24 city council meeting, or save $80,000 to $100,000 of taxpayer money and reverse your previous vote on this ordinance number 19-OR0729-1 pertaining to the North River Farms Project. Thank you, Arlene Hammerschmidt. Our final comment on item number 18 is from Cindy Davenport. Greetings, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I am writing about item number 18 on the agenda today, adoption of three resolutions for the election to be held on November 3 for the referendum petition protesting ordinance number 19-OR0729-1 pertaining to the North River Farms Project. On page 3 of the staff report for item 18, the fiscal impact is an estimated cost of $80,000 to $100,000. As you know, for several years, 2/3 of Oceanside residents consistently speaking at city council meetings have told you that this project should not be permitted due to the damages which would result from sprawl development in this area with no infrastructure to support an additional 585 homes. Significantly increased traffic, pollution from vehicles, and natural gas usage, building in a floodplain, North River Road did flood this spring, and insufficient ways for both existing and new residents to evacuate during frequent wildfire events are major problems. In addition, the council voted in May 2019 to adopt our Climate Action Plan, which prohibits sprawl development but does advocate for easements to help farmers. And of course, you're aware that both the Planning Commission and the planning staff have advised numerous times that this is the wrong development for this land in South Morrow Hills. Given this and the fact that the city revenues are down due to the COVID pandemic, I urge you to not adopt the three resolutions in item 18, and instead rescind ordinance number 19-RO0729-1 and your vote on November 20, 2019 to leave the zoning in South Morrow Hills as agricultural. This will save the city and taxpayers $80,000 to $100,000, which certainly could be put to a better use. For example, you could use these funds to create more jobs by continuing to fund local businesses, helping those in need, like Oceanside Kitchen Collaborative. Sincerely, Cindy Davenport. And that concludes the public comment on item 18.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. And I do understand that we're split here on the dais, so I would like to go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolutions placing referendum petition protesting ordinance number 19-OR0729-1 before the voters in November, November 3. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I would just like to commend the city attorney's office for their great job of putting together a pretty clear description of what the voters are voting on. And I look forward to hearing what the voters want to do with this project come November. I would like to second that.
Mr. Navarro, how many do we have on item 21, on off-agenda items?
We only have one speaker on item number 21.
Let's do that one.
On item number 21, this is from David Newman. Unfortunately, the email he sent for the June 17 city council meeting was flagged as spam by the city's email system and was not distributed to city clerk or city council. Mr. Newman did call the city clerk's office, and we were in communication with Mr. Newman, and we did fix the problem regarding his emails. So, I did promise that I would read his comment on the off-agenda item that he meant for the June 17 city council meeting. His original item was for item number 21 regarding the Sober Services Center. Good afternoon, Oceanside City Council and Mayor. I would like to express my opposition to propose Sober Services Center at 1919 Apple Street. Anyone familiar with this area is already aware of the social struggles and decline associated with Apple Street, noting it already offers an addiction treatment center and Bread of Life homeless services with a WIC office, Alcoholics Anonymous, and a gun store within close proximity. Any given day, we'll see individuals camped on a sidewalk or living in their cars at the entrance to Goat Hill Golf Course. Understand, the Sober Services Center would be responsible for providing its inebriated homeless a place to sober up for 24 hours in order for them to be admitted into an available shelter, but should no shelter have available space or the individual refuse to enter into a shelter, they will then be released into our neighborhoods and street, with the Women's Resource Center being only a few yards away and within stumbling distance to three bars and two liquor stores, with one of the bars being directly to the side separated only by a chain-link fence. I'm not opposed to sobering services. I'm opposed to settling the location and neighborhood with what amounts to a drunk tank adding to the continued degradation of the area. Thank you. David Newman, Oceanside resident and business owner. And that concludes the off-agenda comments.
Are there any general council member comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. A couple of things going on. First of all, the governor did extend part of his orders from 60 days ago that talked about recyclables. So, he extended the in-store redemption of beverage containers for an additional 60 days. But what he did do was allow to expire, the other thing he did was allow to expire the pause on the single-use plastic bags. So, bottom line is, that law banning single-use plastic bags is back in effect. I would suggest that you contact your grocery stores before bringing your bags. They may not have caught up with this. This was, I believe this was two days ago that he announced this. But apparently, we've been collecting, there's been a lot of plastic bags because they were starting to use the really thin, single-use plastic bags again, for free. I don't think anybody got charged for them. It's starting to do the damage that we were trying to avoid. So, just asking, you know, this was, we, as a community, we're doing this and doing it at a very high level, so asking people to start bringing back their bags and recycle your bags. I also wanted to report out, in the county, we did have another spike in numbers, in positives for the COVID. So, confirmed positive cases for the county were 332. It's the highest that we've gotten so far, and that makes it for a total of 11,626. There were a few more hospitalizations, 22 hospitalizations new, and ICU, too, new. We also had six new deaths for a total of 347. For Oceanside, our total number for positives are 312. That means we had 11 new in a 24-hour period. And that, those new numbers, 332, we were really asked to look at the percentage of positives, so it's still at 5%. It did peak at 7%, then we had another five, so it's still at 5%. We were seeing 2% and 3%. So, it is a little higher. The total number of tests were 6,981. And I want to urge you to consider getting tested. We are being told that up to 40% of people who have the virus are asymptomatic. They don't know it. They go out, maybe with family members they haven't seen in a while, they figure they're safe, and then you accidentally spread it to a family member. In Oceanside, we have a place that you can get tested for free. It's at the Wellness Center on Mission Avenue. I went ahead and dialed 211 and made an appointment. I reported that last week, last Wednesday, for the next morning. And it was a drive-through at the Wellness Center, really quick and easy. I'm a wimp when it comes to anything in my nose, and this is the kind of test that just goes, you know, like an inch in each of your nostrils for a certain amount of time, not very long at all. I think it was a minute total. I mean, it was so fast, I can't even remember how long it was, okay? But I believe it was about a minute. And they told me it would be five to seven days to get your results by email. I got them in three days. My test results, test results came out negative. So, hurrah. I know I'm not, I wasn't, on that day that I tested, an asymptomatic spreader. I'm negative, but I'm negative as of that day, right? So, what's really going to protect us all and ensure that our economy continues to get back to where it was is if everyone uses face covering. I'm urging all our residents to use face coverings so that, you know, or at least have it, like, you know, nearby, so that if you come within six feet of somebody else, you know, it's like unprotected sex, right? It's like, you don't know where that person has been. So, I hate to say it that way, but, in other words, it could be someone you haven't seen in a while, or maybe it's someone that you do see, and you think, oh, I'm sure they're being careful. You don't know. So, in order to protect us all, do wear a mask, stay, do the social distancing thing of six feet, and wash your hands, you know, use sanitizing, you know, sprays and gels and things. And just, let's make sure that Oceanside is like the best in terms of keeping the, you know, the numbers down. Lastly, it's too bad we're not going to have fireworks this year. Those fireworks that are happening are not legal. I guess we're all really proud of our graduates, and yes, I have a nephew that just graduated. No fireworks here, though. But the Freedom Days is really special in Oceanside because usually July 3, we celebrate the incorporation of the City of Oceanside, 1888. And then, of course, 4th of July. So, I just want to wish everyone, you know, a really happy 4th of July. I know it's not the way that we would like to celebrate it, but next year, it'll be a good hometown celebration. Thank you.
And with that, I guess, you're not going to let us start the 6 o'clock public hearing now, are you? Then we'll take a break until 6 o'clock. Councilmember?
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. I just want to, I think, express my disappointment for, on behalf of the legislative aides, for not having a fair, fair way of, you know, reducing their hours or whatever it was that you decided to do. I feel like we are, they're the only ones that are taking a pay reduction in the whole thing, and I probably should have spoken up, but there are at least three of our aides were very, I think they're pretty hurt about this decision on item 16. So, I hope there's a way to make it up to them. I mean, it was, for me, it was all or nothing in the beginning, so we probably should have let it, we should have made the decision to do something differently. And I was kind of waiting for somebody whose aide isn't going to retire in a few months. And I apologize to all the aides.
Councilmember Cunha?
I'd like to second what Councilmember Feller said. I did think it was a quick reduction of pay with no notice. There are only employees to have that, and I hope there's a way we can fix it.
And with that, we'll take a break until 6 o'clock. We will re-comine this meeting of the Oceanside City Council and go to our 6 o'clock public hearing item, which is introduction of an ordinance regarding zone amendment modifying whole sections of the City of Oceanside zoning ordinance for, to remove the medical restriction for cultivation facilities for cannabis. And we will open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Staff and a few public.
Staff and public. Staff, we received some emails today, and I had met with two representatives of the cannabis industry.
Staff and public.
Staff, public.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Stephanie Cervantes with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting Zone Amendment 19-0007 and Local Coastal Program Amendment 20-0008 for cannabis cultivation facilities. Staff recommends that the city council adopt modifications to Article 4, 14, and 36 of the zoning ordinance and Chapter 7, Article 13 of the City Code to remove the medical restriction for cannabis cultivation facilities, and adopt a resolution establishing portions of the amended tax as part of the implementing document for the local coastal program. On August 21, 2019, the city council adopted a resolution to increase the number of cultivation licenses from five to 12, and directed staff to prepare a tax amendment to remove the medical restriction for cultivation sites only. The proposed allowance would give cultivators the opportunity to engage in the California adult use market, increasing product viability and profits. The proposed amendment would remove the medical restriction for cultivation sites only, thereby allowing cultivators to grow for adult and medical purposes. The cultivation facilities are still subject to all existing requirements and must still obtain a local license pursuant to the municipal code and regulated use permit pursuant to the zoning ordinance. As of today, the city has issued 12 local licenses for cultivation facilities and has received five conditional use permits for, I'm sorry, five conditional use permit applications. The proposed tax amendment would make changes to Article 4 use classifications and Article 36 regulated uses, which are applied citywide. It is necessary to process the Local Coastal Program Amendment to request California Coastal Commission certification of those articles. The LCPA does not include Article 14 agricultural districts because there are none within the coastal zone. Staff presented the zone amendment to the Planning Commission on November 4, 2019. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval 4 to 0. At the hearing, there were three comments in opposition and four comments in support. At this time, staff recommends that the city council adopt modifications to Article 4, 14, and 36 of the zoning ordinance and Chapter 7 and Article 13 of the City Code to remove the medical restriction for cannabis cultivation facilities, and adopt a resolution establishing portions of the amended tax as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program. Thank you.
Mr. Navarro, we have public?
Yes, we do. Under item number 19, we had seven comments that were received by the city clerk's office and six asked to be read into the record. Our first comment of the evening is from Peggy Walker. This ordinance to remove the medical restriction for cultivation facilities is just one more example of devious marijuana industry intentions. Medical was always a means to get an industry foot in the door of public acceptance, a means to achieve ultimately pervasive adult recreational use. The industry has succeeded. Their disingenuous marketing tactics were superbly planned and executed. Begin by calling pot a medical necessity and allow no one to question the legitimacy of so-called compassionate use. Shame anyone who might. Once publicly accepted, move to the next step, adult recreational use. The well-funded, profit-greedy cannabis capitalists have achieved this goal. The normalization of cultivating a psychoactive drug for recreational purposes has taken place. Forget the consequences in terms of public health and unavoidable diversion to use. public health and unavoidable diversion to use. Forget the added burden on general fund costs such as law enforcement, safety, planning, and development services. It's unfortunate to see this item coming before the council. California already cultivates 10 times more pot than it uses. Now, Oceanside could add to the surplus and fill the pockets of those who reap profit off dependency and addiction." Peggy Walker. Our next public comment is from Madison Matea. "Removing the restrictions on the cultivation of recreational marijuana puts Oceanside in jeopardy of being pulled into the cannabis business with no way out. If the pattern continues, it would only seem logical that the city's next steps are to allow recreational marijuana in manufacturing and distribution. This is the definition of a slippery slope. Already, the City Council affirmed that medical marijuana is the only form of business that Oceanside will tolerate. And yet, the Chapter 7, Article 12 municipal code amendment erases the word 'medical' for all cannabis facilities, thus allowing recreational marijuana cultivation completely delegitimizes the prior argument for medical use. There will be less incentive to isolate marijuana to medicinal only when recreational cultivation already takes place, which opens the door to a future where recreational marijuana is being manufactured and sold, not just grown legally in the city. Oceanside has worked so hard in the last two decades to reestablish and reimagine its image, most notably by the renaissance of the downtown district. As the city's trusted leaders, please be sure not to inadvertently undermine the tremendous progress that we have made as a community by allowing the profit-based priorities of cultivators to come before Osid Pride." The agenda no longer says that there is a word restriction for this comment, oh, that's for me. "Thank you. Sincerely, Madison Matea." Our next public comment is from David Newman. "Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, in reading staff's report regarding the immense benefit to adding adult-use cultivation to the current medical-only licenses, I feel it's disproportionate and unfair to limit this benefit to cultivation only. The benefit described by staff was to remove the restriction of medical-only in order to conduct business with a larger market that includes all licensed cannabis businesses in the state of California, increasing the product viability and profits. Given this understanding, it makes little sense to only offer this benefit to one category of Oceanside licensees, and has a potential of putting the city in a position of litigation. In the wake of COVID-19 and the city's plan to tax cannabis licensees, it would be appropriate to extend the adult-use benefit, allowing enough time for any needed changes in state licensing and business structure. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. David Newman, Oceanside resident and business owner." Our next public comment is from Becky Rapp. "Good evening. My name is Becky Rapp. Regarding expanding the definition marijuana use to include adult-use marijuana, I'm a parent to three teenagers and community volunteer. I have deep concerns with how the marijuana industry is too quickly blanketing our community. It's becoming a household term. Advertising and billboards are popping up all over the county. My question is, what message does Oceanside want to portray? The idea of removing the medical restrictions for cultivation facilities only sends a message to your constituents that you're in support of commercializing marijuana. It is not a secret that the medical marijuana industry is only a shield for their real intent. I would urge you rethink this language change and communicate to our city that you're not in support of expanding the use of an addictive and mind-altering drug. Thank you." Our next comment is from Erica Leary. "Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, the North Coastal Prevention Coalition has been concerned with preventing youth substance use, including marijuana, for over 25 years. Locally and nationally, marijuana is the only substance not seeing declines in youth use. Local data from Vista and Oceanside California Healthy Kids Survey showed that in 2019, past 30-day use of marijuana by 11th graders was higher than that of alcohol for the first time ever documented. A recent JAMA report concluded that cannabis regulations throughout California are not incorporating best practices in public health to prevent and reduce potential harms, including youth access and use, attached here for reference. Permitting farmers to cultivate both adult-use and medical marijuana in order to maximize profits will put you on a path to approve adult-use in all Oceanside marijuana businesses. Why would you want farmers to succeed but not the manufacturers they sell to, the distributors who deliver products, and the retailers who sell it? But there are still many public health priorities that could be adopted, such as prohibiting onsite consumption, prohibiting flavored vaping products, regulating potency limits, and ensuring products don't end up in the hands of minors through compliance checks and reasonable penalties. I encourage you to direct staff to explore regulations with a public health focus, not just an economic one, to improve health, to improve community health when making policy decisions. NCPC would be happy to assist. Thank you for your consideration. Erica Leary, MPH, Program Manager, North Coastal Prevention Coalition." Mrs. Leary has attached the JAMA report to her public comments. Our final comment on item number 19 is from Kelly McCormick. "Mayor and City Councilmembers, the request to change pot cultivation facilities from medical use to recreational is a prime example of maneuvering by the marijuana industry. Observers know the push to approve medical marijuana was merely a placeholder, a foot in the door until the industry could use money and political influence to change the designation. The approval of recreational marijuana was their goal all along, and now we see it coming to fruition." Kelly McCormick. And that concludes the public comment on item number 19.
And with that, we will close the public input portion. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. Where do I begin? I would, first and foremost, before any motions are made, hopefully, we can all be on the same page on this item, let's hear from everybody on the dais. I think it's important that we have straightforward conversations, looking at this from different angles, and addressing the concerns of the public with respect to, you know, flavored items that may be more appealing to kids than the non-flavored items. So, hopefully, as a council, as a body, we can have a productive conversation before making any motions, and, you know, get something real effective done for the future of our city. Number one, I first would like to, I'm probably going to use my 10 minutes, so I'm just giving you a heads up. So, no grunting. So, first and foremost, I have seven children. My oldest is 21. My youngest is about 11 months, about to turn one. So, when it comes to kids, I think I outweigh everyone on the dais with respect to concerns with, you know, about cannabis and exposure. I'm of the philosophy that if a parent is involved and is in communication with their kids, they should know what their kids are doing and communicate the consequences of those. And when that kid becomes 18, they're an adult, and they make decisions for themselves. So, you know, I think parents have a big responsibility in, you know, in the life of their child, and what they are exposed to, and what they're not exposed to, and communicating the consequences of. That's a parent's, you know, one of our number-one responsibilities. As a child, my father, in Chicago, he was a Latin king. He started out doing dope, weed, whatever you want to call it, and moved his way up to cocaine and everything else, dealt drugs. And so, I was exposed to a lot as a child. He was abusive. I remember hiding my sister in the closet when the violence was going on, and just the exposure as a young adult for the decisions he made. I don't blame that on marijuana, and I don't think any of us should. But for the longest time, I always looked at it as that was his beginning. But the key element I want to point out is he illegally, illegally acquired that drug, and made his own decisions regardless. And so, you know, I have experience, and I think it's important in our convictions, and I respect Deputy Mayor Feller for his convictions on how he typically votes on this subject, but I have my convictions and experience to understand that the majority of the concerns by individuals I speak to of 11th graders having access to weed are from illegal shops. Two-thirds, two-thirds of marijuana that's circulating its way through our city right now is from illegal operations. You will not find an 11th grader walking into a legal dispensary in Vista and buying a product, because that business will lose their license, like, immediately. It is not worth it. There are too many adults that are available to patronize those businesses. So, if children are having access to marijuana, they're having access to it because illegal operations are funding those sources. And that's the problem. That's what we have to understand. And I think it's government's responsibility to not be naive and to look at the facts, and to think, how can we stop the black market? How can we get involved to protect our children? I want to protect my seven kids, including my 21-year-old, who just got married. I want to protect her. I want to protect my, my almost one-year-old as she gets older. And what's the most effective way we can protect our community from illegal operations? That's through local control, okay? Number one, local control on things that are happening, whether we like it or not. You may not see it, you may not be the one buying it, but it's happening. It's a fact. So, with it being a fact, what can we do as local government to ensure that the black market thugs who are illegally bringing drugs into our city and funneling it to the corners for our kids who are smoking in the bathrooms, and now using it more than alcohol? How can we stop those guys? I could tell you how we stop those guys. Local control. Local control comes with taxation, comes with regulation, comes with millions of additional tax revenues that we can funnel to our police department, to our fire department, to put an end to those thugs' game, to put an end to their show, so that we could protect our kids, that we could get information to the school districts, that we have the funding and the resources available to combat the illegal activity. By the way, two-thirds of it is going on, whether we like it or not. So, with that being said, and understanding the illegal activity that's happening in our city, regardless of our vote happens here, how can we move on a pathway to protect Jack Feller's grandchildren from an illegal individual selling it in our street, whether we like it or not? How can we move to increase our revenue so we have the police and fire support to deal with these issues, to make up for the losses of COVID-19? How? Well, Vista residents went on a ballot initiative, and got an item on a ballot, and that took away local control. And then, their council had to come quickly to put a tax on the ballot. And, you know, we can learn from our neighbors' mistakes. But regardless of those mistakes, their estimated revenues, year-to-date, was $236,000. To date, they've brought in over $750,000, and that's going to push a million here pretty soon, so that they can fund the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department to come in and shut down those illegal operations, put them out of business. So, I don't look at this as expanding the black market, because we're not. We're getting rid of it. These efforts in local control are getting rid of the black market. And that's why I'm here today, and that's why I'm speaking up, and that's why I hope we can talk about, in a productive way, as a council. And so, with that being said, I would like to commend Councilmember Sanchez for her comments. On August 21, when we were discussing giving 12 licenses, you brought up your support of opening this up for, for, you know, more businesses. I think by your efforts, you, that's why we're standing here today, opening it up to both sides. Also, you mentioned opening up of dispensaries, retail dispensaries, which are heavily regulated, which produce a lot of tax revenue to knock out the black market. And so, I would like to stop talking and allow Councilmember Sanchez to elaborate on some of those ideas that you brought up on August 21, and see if we can have further discussion about that.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Well, I'm next. Yes. Okay, so, I was hoping that the tax item on the cannabis would be on today's calendar agenda. Unfortunately, it's been moved to August, the first meeting in August, August 5, I think it is, because there's still ongoing discussion with respect to, you know, what that, what that, what we should be proposing. And I look forward to that discussion. I, I'm not sure which comments you're talking about. I am supportive of this, because I do feel that we need to support agri- agri-uses. And this does not put any cannabis into Oceanside. This is actually going towards the market, so that there, so that our farmers can continue to farm, and also that Oceanside end up getting some, some financial benefit out of it. I'm not looking to, to grow revenue or rely on revenue for the use of cannabis. In my mind, cannabis was decriminalized. There is, there has been no enforcement, and why should there be, for cannabis? I do agree with respect to our youth, that we have to be on it. In my neighborhood, which is Latino neighborhood, which is, let's face it, it's usually been the Latino community, or the communities of color, that have been unequally represented in enforcement, in jails, in our prisons, all for drugs. And as a former deputy public defender, it just seems so, so unfair. Now that we have decriminalized it, for me, the issue has become more of a health issue with respect to our kids, our youth. And, you know, it's alcohol, it's cannabis, it's tobacco. They could be legal. They are legal. But it's this whole idea that if you start before you have the ability to make those really hard decisions about, hey, is this really going to be helpful towards, for you, in whatever you decide to do, go to college, you know, earn a trade, you know, whatever it is that you want to do, you know, you've shared some, some personal information, and I'll share a little bit, too. I mean, marijuana has always been around in the Latino community. It's, you know, I mean, it's used for medicinal purposes. It's like yerba buena. It's, it's something that has not really been a big deal. The only big deal was the for-sale part of it. Well, I don't, now that it's decriminalized, it's not a big deal anymore. It's, you know, for me, saying to black market is kind of a racist thing to say, because we're talking about our communities of color when we talk about that. And I, for one, don't want to see it become criminalized all over again. I am supportive of medicinal dispensaries. I'd like to see the tax get through, and then see if a council will just go ahead and do three dispensaries. That would be on November's ballot, and that passes through, then, you know, we need to provide access. I feel that we do need to provide access. Vista approved 11 dispensaries, medicinal dispensaries. They have five open. I understand that came with the taxing authority, and that they are I understand that came with the taxing authority and that they are realizing some level of revenue. I, I'm not sure how much. But I don't, I'm not here to compete with Vista. 11 dispensaries. I want to be able to ensure that our community, our residents have access, that they don't have to go to Vista. You know, I, having three would, I think in different parts of the city would provide that. I mean, basically, we're running out of grocery stores. I'm seeing grocery stores disappearing. We don't even have a grocery store in the coast, right? But we want to have some kind of access, right? So personally, I didn't use in high school. I was, you know, my, the substance abuse around me was actually alcohol. And I didn't want to partake. I get to college though, and then there's all this stress. I was one of five in the whole school of 5,000. And I was, I was at an Ivy League school, and the pressure was tremendous. So what did I learn to do? I learned how to drink, and I learned how to smoke marijuana. And that was self-medication. For me, it was about making myself feel better because I did not know if my good was good enough. I learned the hard way that it was. But, you know, I, I saw my, the few people that were there, that were communities of color, end up not getting to year two, dropping out. And I think it's a cop-out, you know? But how do you know? I mean, I, I did not have anybody going to college in my family. You know, my parents didn't even finish high school. My mom went to school for one year. And so it was a pressure thing. I didn't think of it as a pressure thing till I, till I got there. And so I had to, I'm a pretty stubborn person. So basically, I ended up realizing, you know, after I cried a couple of days, dusted myself off and say, you know what? Nobody tells me what I can and can't do. Nobody tells me what I can and can't accomplish. So I did it. I graduated from Brown University. I ended up going to law school and passing the bar the first time, even though there's, you know, zero bar passage rate for first-time Latino takers. And I thought, you know what? I'm going to do this because I believe in myself. I don't need to have, you know, this. It's always been there, always been there. And I think those issues for our youth, I mean, I'm happy to talk to kids about my personal experiences and what I saw. It did lead to harder drugs in some cases, some cases not. But I believe that we still need to protect our youth. I think this is a gradual thing. I want to see how it goes with what we're doing. Nobody is rushing into this. No cities are rushing into this. And I want to be known as a city that celebrates its diversity, has all these really cool cultural institutions like the Museum of Art, the California Surf Museum, has Noche Mexicana and Phil Am Cultural Celebration, everything. Celebrate that, our people. And as to these issues that we have, very, very specific issues that we deal with at the community level, I'm hoping that whatever money we raise off of cannabis, we can put it back into the community to make up for the years, and I'm saying years, decades, of treating certain communities, communities of color differently simply because of their skin. So I live in, I still live in the Latino community where I grew up, and there are kids that are telling us, that come to these meetings, saying, please do not allow recreational cannabis. Please do not say yes. I'm trying here to find a balance because I'm hearing others say, this is for medicinal purposes. This is for my, my situation, my cancer, my glaucoma. And I, I, you know, if it's working, that person ought to have access. It is the law. So tonight, I'm not willing or wanting to do that. Tonight, I want to go ahead and move forward with this. I actually had two questions for staff. Hopefully you will answer them. Right. One, one issue that I, and I discussed both of these with the city attorney previously. Why would we be liable, or would we be liable for some kind of litigation? And also, why is this being included in our local coastal plan as an amendment since there's no cultivation in the coastal zone? Thank you.
Mayor and Council, with respect to the latter question, the local coastal program amendment is required because we are changing definitions in Article Four of the zoning ordinance. And so that is a component of the LCP. There are no cultivation facilities within the coastal zone, but the definitional sections apply citywide. So for consistency purposes, to ensure that Article Four remains current in the local coastal program, I believe that's why we're pursuing the LCP amendment, as we have done with other cannabis-related definitions that we've made over the years. With respect to the litigation question, I'm not aware of any legal theory that has been set forth saying that we're at risk by removing the medical-only limitation for cultivation. None has been presented to me, and I've seen no cases on that issue.
Right, and I just wanted to add one more thing that I haven't used since college. Just in case anybody thought that I was still using. No, no, I think, I think much better of myself now.
Thank you. You're done. Seeing no other lights, I'm going to move staff recommendation on this item since it's very specific to what it, did she make a motion?
No.
I did.
I didn't think so.
I said move.
You said move forward.
Oh, that was my motion, sorry. Okay, I'll second your motion.
Okay. But what I, what I would like to say is very interesting, and, and, you know, I think David Newman made a point that we should allow, open it up to all of the businesses, and I'm not opposed to that at this point in time, seeing how easily it is to combine adult use with medicinal use. It doesn't take much to be able to get that medicinal approval. So I, you know, at some point in future, I, I would be, I think reluctantly but supportive of allowing it to be a fair playing field for everyone, whether it's in the distribution, manufacturing, or the cultivation side of things as well. And I think we're having our first dispensary opening here in the next few weeks. And I believe at the time we approved those, we had indicated that six months after the first opening, we would revisit all of those types of issues to see how, how they've been operating, what they've been doing. And I've actually now visited several of the dispensaries in Vista. And although I have some concerns about the storefront dispensaries, I'd like to see the, the delivery ones up and running first. But I think at some point in time, we are going to be facing the issue of having to be in a position where, where we're going to have to do something with storefront dispensaries or it's going to be handed to us like it was handed to Vista. So I, I think at that point in time, I think whomever's here needs to be prepared to take that on. And I, I would prefer doing it at the local level with local control so we have the ability to make changes as we need to versus having the voters put us something, give us something that we can't really live with and not be able to change it. So Deputy Mayor Feller.
Thank you. So one of the speakers, Madison Mattela, she does speak for hundreds of young children out of Oceanside High School and, and the groups that she's associated with. So, and I believe it's a sincere opposition to what is going on here tonight because, you know, many of them probably see it right in their own, in their own families. It's happened in probably every family, some, in some form or fashion. My, my thoughts are probably, I, I think they may be archaic, but I'm, I'm also almost 72, so I guess I get to be old if I want to be. The idea of making it more convenient to get any, any form of drug, but in our era, 50 years ago, it was try to get somebody to buy a bottle of beer for us. Well, it's more than 50 years ago, but those, those things will come, will continue to happen. So it's, you know, it's, it's not necessarily going to be a black market elimination, but it's just going to be moved over to something else. I think my only mistake in all of this has been that I fell for the bait with this being just medical marijuana and good for medical purposes. I don't doubt that. I, I would think that it probably is, and that's why I decided to allow that to go forward in, in that timeframe, or I voted to let it go forward. I don't even know that I was, it would have made a difference one way or the other then. But, but it is a true bait and switch from what initially was brought before us. So I'm still not supporting it. I, I can't. My young, my young grandchildren are cared for by parents who are caring about what they do in every step of every day. And, and for that, I'm eternally grateful. But I'm also going to be diligent in my time left on earth to make life better for my children, grandchildren, your children, Councilmember Rodriguez. It's, it's about the children, so I will not support this.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Peter, I heard you reference, since the staff's recommendation is specific to cultivation, and today's motion is opening that up so that, you know, it, it's almost one and the same, but to open that so they can move the market to both adult use and cultivation. And I heard Esther say she's going to support that. So what, but then you also referenced, you know, we, we have specific approved type businesses in the city of Oceanside, but you also referenced that you would support the language of, instead of just saying cultivation, all, you know, pretty much all currently approved cannabis businesses. Is that correct?
Yes, to make it a fair playing field for all. Got it.
John, can you weigh in on that? Are we able to change the language instead of saying cultivation to be, to, to read all cannabis businesses?
You'd need, if you want to broaden this beyond just cultivation, and so this item is coming back to, to you tonight because you gave us direction to do this specific change. If you want to do a broader, more specific change to, to have adult use for all cannabis businesses, that will need to be drafted. And so we would need to bring that back to you. It doesn't need to take any long period of time, but if you want to broaden the definitions, you can go ahead and introduce the item tonight and give us direction to make those changes and come back to you at a future meeting if that's the will of the council. Can't do it tonight, though. I mean, you could just give us the direction.
And when we say, when we say all businesses, we're talking about just the ones that we've approved as a city. We're not talking about retail or anything else yet.
Well, what you have right now, you've approved that there is a requirement to have a local license and a conditional use permit, and that is for all businesses essentially except for storefront dispensaries.
Got it. So it would be open to all that? Okay. So that would have to come back. I heard Peter and Esther both reference the potential for future retail dispensaries. And I also heard some language about, you know, let's see what the voters decide. So with that being said, what are your thoughts, Peter, on potentially having staff put together some language when we do discuss the tax? Because we got to deal with the tax. Otherwise, we're not getting it on the ballot if we don't get it on, on time. But having a meeting in July potentially specific to this item on adding, you know, permit, permitting retail dispensaries for onsite cannabis sales subject to a CUP, which gives the council control, and having the voters of Oceanside, which is important to Esther, which is important to me, which is important to you, Peter, decide on that this November instead of us deciding. Let's let the voters decide. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, you're out of time too. Let's vote on this. That way we can reset. So there's a motion and a second for this specific item. Please vote.
It's an introduction.
Go ahead.
I'll need to title this. This is, we have the REZO for the LCP amendment, but I need to title the ordinance for the Chapter Seven of the OCC changes and the zoning changes. So this is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, California, amending Chapter Seven of the Oceanside City Code in Articles 414 and 36 of the zoning ordinance to remove the medical-only limitation on approved commercial cannabis cultivators.
Motion approved, 401. Feller, no?
So you started with, so in the end, I think that you're, you're dead on. I think COVID stopped the current citizens' petition, which would completely take local control. It's going to come back. It is the way it is. I, I think it's empowering and important that we give the voters an opportunity in November to allow the potential for retail dispensaries. And we can word it in a way that gives council and staff can put it together, but we can word it in a way, you know, maximum of three or whatever. You know, I heard Esther say three. But in the end, we have that local control and we also, it's a win-win, and we also have voter decision-making to allow retail dispensaries for cannabis sales subject to a CUP. I, I think it's important to let the voters decide, and, and I think we have enough time now as a city to not delay any further on this and have, have the city attorney's office draft some language that we can come back in July along with the other item we just talked about, all cannabis businesses to do both medicinal and, and adult use that are currently approved. And I, I think that would be wise of us to allow the voters to decide on this and, and, and make a decision.
Councilmember Sanchez?
I think he wanted to hear from you first.
Oh, are your lights on?
I'll wait for you, and then I'll speak.
I'm still thinking.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Mayor? Well, just to clarify one thing. If you're entertaining, if there's consensus, three votes on the council to move forward with some kind of ballot measure, and I don't know that there is. So if there's not, that takes care of it. But if there is, my advice would be to hold a meeting in July to give us direction. I don't think I could show up at a meeting with staff with a ballot measure ready for you to approve because I have no idea what it is the majority of council wants. So that, that would be the purpose if we were to have that meeting is to give us that direction because, you know, I've seen over the course of many years, very different opinions about cannabis. And so I don't, I think it would be somewhat presumptuous for me to just draft something and present it to you as a ballot measure. The idea would be if you were to have a meeting, you'd give us that direction, then we'd bring it back to you before the deadline.
My, my, sorry. My, my thoughts were that this would piggyback in conjunction, the same measure of, we're discussing tax, because the tax is dealing with adult use as well. It, it's generic in that it's not just taxing medicinal. It is specific to taxing all cannabis. So could we include this language on the same measure is what I was thinking, that we'd save money? And then we could have a July meeting to, you know, to give direction, but you're going to come back in August before our deadline, and you can give us option A, option B, and we can make a decision. But can you put all those together?
There, there's a lot of policy reasons perhaps not to do that, but that's the type of item that we'd probably want to discuss at a special meeting because we're item that we'd probably want to discuss at a special meeting, because, remember, we're not agendized to talk about ballot measures tonight. And the real question is, do you want to have a meeting in July to draft a ballot measure? My inclination, Councilmember Rodriguez, is that we would want to have separate measures, because the notion of, and that we could do that, we certainly could have a measure drafted for the voters to consider, if that's the will of the council, but by tying it to the taxation measure, you might, you know, you might lose the taxation measure because of it. So it may be wiser to have them separate. I don't know if the city manager wants to weigh in, but it's really a policy call.
So I guess, I guess the question is, do we want to have a special meeting in July to talk about a ballot measure, to open it up for, for all? And I'll just make it simple. I'll move that we have a special meeting to have that conversation. Is that a second?
Yes, I do.
Councilmember Sanchez?
We are in a pandemic. We've not been able to have any public in here. We haven't been able to really have the public involved in this. This is absolutely a 180. I'm hearing that we want to do recreational and medicinal for everything in Oceanside, and I'm not prepared for that. I, I don't think we should do this. What I would like to do is suggest that the tax, if the tax passes in November, that we ask staff to calendar a proposal for having three dispensaries, but I want medicinal. I, I think that we need to go slow in this. There is no one else that's doing recreational as well in North County. I don't want to be the first ones out the door. And I know that a lot of the public members don't want that. I don't want to recriminalize use and recriminalize a whole, you know, all these, you know, communities of color neighborhoods all over again. It's just, there is absolutely no proof that having shops decreases the black market. In fact, the evidence is that the black market is increased. And I, you know, I'm using the word, and I, and I don't like it. It's like Home Industries, you know? I'm very concerned that we're gonna recriminalize certain populations in our community, and we don't have to do that. The only thing that people were asking for is medicinal, because that is something that is a lot more, you know, a lot more specific, and has to do with certain ingredients, you know, the cannabis oil, that in, in, in mixed a certain way, does decrease pain for people. And that is something that I want to be able to provide access for, is medicinal uses. So I don't feel that we should meet in July to do something really quickly. I think that that is gonna be, that at a time when we can't have a really good discussion, and I would prefer to have this over time, with our community at the community level. Our, I know kids, the kids that have been coming to us and talking to us, who haven't been able to get into the chambers, would be very upset by this. So, you know, I'm asking, I'm asking my colleagues here to say no to a meeting in July, because, you know, I think, I'd rather go slowly in this situation, and hopefully ensure that we don't have higher crime based on drugs. Thank you.
Councilmember Kine?
I know I've been quiet so far. I think this issue, as with any other issue I've dealt with on council so far, I like to go slowly, whether it's STRs. I think it's, you learn from your mistakes, as you go, you learn from other cities' mistakes. Again, I want to echo some of what the mayor said, where you take six months, we figure out what we did right, what we did wrong, what kind of negative consequences we had from having them open, maybe none. And I'm very open to having that conversation. What concerns me, and this is the first time I'm hearing about it, I'm hearing all kinds of numbers and time limits and everything thrown in, and I've got a couple of minutes to do this, and we also have a council chamber that's not open to the public. So we've had, you know, we get emails daily about our public not having access and being able to discuss an issue, and this is a very important issue to a lot of people, that I think they should have that access here. And so to have a last-minute council meeting with no public, and to do that, I'm concerned about that. I think if COVID restrictions change, I'd be more apt to having that, but I don't want to have one where it's closed off and decide an issue like that. But I think if we go six months and evaluate what we've done, I think there's definitely some room for progress. I just, right now, I need to, I want to sit down with the police department, I want to sit down with the City Attorney's Office, I want to ask specific questions. I'd like to sit down and look at Vista, the actual taxes, their specific issues, talk to the Sheriff's Department, what they've had, what we need to plan for, and then make a very educated decision. And very well, like I said, I think it's important to be open-minded and address just regular adult use, and I think it's going that direction, but we just need to do it the right way. So right now, I'm not open to having a council meeting that's closed to the public to discuss this issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
All right, first and foremost, COVID-19 happened outside of everyone's control. We are policymakers, and we're talking about coming to a special meeting to have another conversation, which is gonna lead to a future meeting. Just because the council chambers are closed, doesn't mean we stop policy, okay? It's our job. Number two, when we discuss the potential for dispensaries, no one said adult-use dispensaries, retail dispensaries. This is only about medical. The only conversation we had about all cannabis businesses are cultivation, manufacturing, because you got to manufacture it, testing, because you got to test it, and the only variable that is on there is delivery, which there's tons of business delivering in our city right now, from outside our jurisdiction, for adult use. That's, that's all we were talking about with respect to adult use. When it's coming toward a potential ballot initiative to ask voters what they want, which is all voters of our city, not what we can cram in our chamber, okay? All of them, they're gonna vote, and they're gonna make a decision, not 100 people that can come into our chamber. We're scheduling a special meeting to have further discussion. Policymakers. I mean, unless you have a month-long vacation scheduled for July, I want to come and have a serious conversation. As far as not rushing, how the hell long have we been talking about cannabis in the city of Oceanside? Did you, have you not read, Ryan, have you not read the Ad Hoc Committee's recommendation with hundreds and hundreds of Oceanside residents' feedback? Well, your response just now, obviously not. You go back all the way to 96, all the way till today, in the city of Oceanside, all that's been is time, all that's been is talk. Meanwhile, it's being sold illegally in our streets. Well, I give a shit. Obviously, you don't. Okay? And that's why I want to have a special meeting in July to talk about it more, to potentially move it forward.
Point of order, we have a decorum rule. Please address the issues.
Okay, thank you. The special meeting is not not involving the public, it's to have further discussions. It'll be agendized, we'll be able to receive emails, we're not making a policy decision, we're discussing, we're having a future conversation. We're not talking about adult-use retail. I want to clarify that from the right wing of this dais. So it looks like we're not going to have the support, but I do want to make that clear, because I will call you out on the BS that you bring up on this dais. Thank you.
Councilmember Kine?
I'm just a, the way the process goes and the lack of decorum, it's just amazing. I mean, this is obviously not the first time, but I think you come in here last minute. I don't know what the, we don't know what the meeting's about, that's what exactly it was about, it was about adult-use retail. That was, I thought, the discussion. So I, now I'm just, I've heard three or four different things. Again, I think it's important that we have, if we don't want, if we don't want people to come to council meetings, then why don't we just close the council chambers? I haven't, there's been no double speak from this side. I've had some concerns, I think we can work through them, we go incrementally. Again, I'm hearing about this during council meetings, it would have been nice to get some kind of forewarning or a council agenda item to discuss it, so I could sit down and talk to city staff. I think this is the most inappropriate way to do it. And then to tell your colleagues that they're irresponsible for not knowing what you're gonna bring up randomly, and this is not the first time this has happened. So I just, it's the most inappropriate request, and the way this has happened, it's unbelievable. I made myself clear.
Councilmember Sanchez?
I just, I don't know if, how many people were able to attend the Ad Hoc Committee, because it was chaired by two council members, nobody, no other council members were able to attend. And it was very specifically to discuss with the industry, the cannabis industry, those who were opposed, or at least wanted to have a more balanced discussion, were asked not to attend. So I think that we need to have a better discussion. It can't happen in a month. I think it's gonna need the six months. But, you know, this, this is, we are representatives. We're not just policymakers, we are representatives, and we need to hear from the public. That's it. Thank you.
So there's a motion and a second specifically to, do we want to have a meeting in July? Do you have further conversations? Please vote.
Motion fails. Two, three. Kine, Sanchez, Feller, no.
And with that, we will be adjourning to our next meeting, which is 3:30 on Wednesday, August 5th.